Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We bring this meeting to order. Meeting of January 22nd, a regular Town Council. Notice everybody is present. We will begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. I'm hoping that everybody can hear me. We have a new microphone system. Is my microphone all okay? You can hear me okay? Everybody in the back says, no, I can't hear you. You can hear me. Okay. Next item, item three, confirmation of the agenda. That the agenda for January 22nd be approved. Need a mover and seconder. Councilor De Rosier, Deputy Mayor Barber. Any additions, corrections? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Item five is a recognition ceremony. We're very pleased to recognize firefighters in Elmer. First, I'd like to invite the Fire Chief Mccone to join me at the front of the room to present the awards. And he'll have to listen to my short speech for a bit. Today, we gather to recognize the remarkable dedication and service of our firefighters who have reached significant milestones in their careers. These milestones are not just numbers. They represent countless hours of training, responding to emergencies, and I'm sure that listening to pagers in the middle of the night or in the middle of dinner is not a great thing either, and putting the safety of others above all else. Your bravery, professionalism, and commitment are the heart which makes our community strong and resilient. These certificates are a small token of our deep appreciation of the work you do every day. On behalf of the town of Elmer, thank you for your unwavering service and congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Your achievements inspire us all and remind us of the vital role you play in protecting and supporting our town. Thank you very much on behalf of the town. So I will call up the, I think we have six people here. First of all, Megan Garrett, five years exemplary service to public's safety. I hope I pronounced your last name right.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. And then Pacey Kixey, five years exemplary service to public safety. Mark Bartlett, 15 years exemplary service to public safety. Ken Graham, 15 years exemplary service to public safety. Brian Jacques, 15 years exemplary service to public safety. And Ryan Lor, 15 years exemplary service to public safety. And Brian Lor, 15 years exemplary service to public safety. And Ron Van Lier, 30 years exemplary service to public safety, and additionally from the Right Honorable Mary Simon, Governor General of Canada, in recognition of 30 years of loyal and exemplary service to public safety in Canada. Congratulations. Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, it's so our appreciation. Now that we have them lined up so nicely, we'll take a picture and take a recess for a minute. Okay, welcome back. We are now at item five, delegations in public meetings. We have a 5.2 staff reports related to delegations, the manager of Parks and Recreation, joint use of facilities. We have a resolution.
That report Recreation 02-25 entitled Joint Use of Facilities be received as information, and that council directs staff to proceed in developing a joint use of facilities pilot agreement with East Elgin Secondary School to expand the use of local schools in the Thames Valley District School Board.
Mover and seconder. Councilor Chapman and Councilor Rahi. Susie's doing the report, right?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to council. The report we have prepared for you this evening is to provide information regarding community use of schools and further to that, the benefits of a joint use agreement. So tonight, the resolution and request before council is to seek approval to enter into a pilot joint use of facilities agreement with East Elgin Secondary School with the intention of expanding this joint use of facilities agreement to include other Thames Valley District School Board, schools within Elmer. So a little background, the Community Use of Schools Initiative is an initiative of the Ontario Ministry of Education that supports community access to school spaces outside of educational hours. So further to these community use, the Community Use of Schools Initiative, municipalities and schools or school boards can choose to enter into reciprocal agreements whereby spaces are shared, reducing the burden of infrastructure on either party and enhancing educational experiences and recreational opportunities to communities. Joint use of agreements, so these reciprocal agreements where we can share each other's spaces, provides low-cost community access to spaces that aren't, like I said, within the portfolio of, in our case, town-owned facilities, or in the case of educational institutions, quite often town-owned assets such as arenas, sports, sports fields, parks, trails, and things of that nature. So again, our benefit and our, I don't want to seal the thunder of our delegation coming up, they'll share all the great things that they have to offer in a reciprocal agreement as well, but certainly from a Parks and Recreation perspective, this ties in and is an initiative recommended right within our Parks and Recreation Master Plan whereby it does encourage and suggest considering entering into a joint use of school agreement with local school boards to increase recreational programming within educational institutions. But again, these agreements can list the facilities, specific facilities, whether they're indoor/outdoor opportunities for expanded community recreation programming. That would all be played out in the agreement. So it's expected with this current joint use agreement that's yet to be developed with East Elgin Secondary School, staff have met with administration at the school and are excited about the opportunity to both expand recreational opportunities and introduce youth in the community to our town-owned facilities through some exciting enhanced curriculum opportunities. So it's anticipated that initially the ask will include ICE time, which is a substantial cost as compared to perhaps renting a gymnasium. However, the benefits to the community, students and community members of all ages to have access to the school spaces is certainly important. It's important to note that this reciprocal agreement won't also, it won't include graduation events, so those private community-based rentals, large rentals that we would have, necessarily we would host, that we would host, that would be rented. Again, this is asked to be a pilot program, to be in place the balance of 2025 and through the 2025, 2026 school year. That'll give us enough time to evaluate the effectiveness of the program, hopefully see the success in the community, and then expand into a broader joint use of facilities agreement with the school board. It is, through the financial section of my report, it is anticipated that there could be financial impact, like I'd mentioned, just due to the cost of ICE. And typically, a reciprocal agreement would result in no cost to either party, but we're hoping for council's blessing this evening to be able to expect to spend up to $6,000 in the event that the reciprocal agreement for this year wasn't exactly 50/50, just to be able to support the expansion of this amazing community programming. So through the joint use agreement, utilizing existing infrastructure through community partners such as gymnasiums, weight rooms, and things of the sort, along with the associated equipment, which is great. We can offer a volleyball program, they've got the nets, the standards, the space, the appropriate flooring, the equipment. We can certainly continue our mission to promote active living in the community, reduce the financial burden of participating in activities that require additional fees if offered through the school without an agreement in place. So thank you for your consideration tonight, and if there's any questions, I'd certainly entertain that, and I'm sure our delegation will offer additional insight. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment and a question. I think this all makes good sense. There's no point having doubles, and there's stuff that can be offered, but when it comes to the EEECC, is there anything that is conflicting with our partner as far as with the complex and how that kind of works out?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Rahi. Not potentially a conflict, but I would see this as an opportunity for the town of Elmer. So it would be the cost of ICE, so recovering that cost. So the portion of the revenue that would come back to the town of Elmer, which would be half of the school rental, would be about $35, give or take, that would be waived through the town, and then through that $6,000 that we would then, funded through town reserve or our town budget for this program, we would then pay that other half. So that's how that would, our partner would be made whole. We wouldn't be requesting any other funding assistance, but it would be a town-supported program and funded that way. Hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you to Susie. Is the intent of the approach on the discussions broad enough to include perhaps a community group that wanted to have a training session in a classroom? Let's, for example, say, first aid. Would that be appropriate use?
Thank you through you, your worship to Deputy Mayor. The, in the discussions we've been having currently, there's some specific spaces identified, and there is a space that, I believe it was an old math classroom, a dance studio, it's sort of a multi-use space, about the size of a standard, well, it was a standard classroom. That would be an appropriate space and available for that use. So that community use is really intended not just to be for active, but social opportunities as well, so workshops, seminars, gentle fitness, you know, all sorts of programming to meet the needs of the community. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is related to the program, but in regards to financing. So obviously, I do support the program. I think it's a great initiative. But the question that Member Rahi had about working with our governing systems and then that cost recovery, this may be a question directed to the treasurer, so I apologize, but where is that funding coming from? Like what reserve is that money coming from? If I could get that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Member, sorry, to Councilor De Rosier, and I can tap Heather in if you'd like. This would be a request, I believe, to come through council reserves or council initiatives? Is that right? Yeah, so that would be, again, the blessing to use that fund to fund the community, this community initiative.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. More of just a comment. I know we're in the, it sounds like you're in the very early stages of working through this, which there's always some kinks to work out, but I'm really excited to hear this because I'm a strong believer and supporter of collaboration, and I think that's the only, that's the best way to build stronger, more inclusive communities and offer programs, unique programs to people that we don't currently offer. So for me, this is really exciting, and the cost of it seems kind of minimal to be able to see what the reward may be. So I'm excited to hear the delegation and then see what's going to happen moving forward. So thank you very much for all the work you put into this.
Councilor Chapman?
I just want to, oh my goodness. I just follow up with what Mayor Bar, Deputy Bar, oh my goodness. Counselor Barber. I'll find my tongue eventually. What he said about collaborating with the school, I think it's a fantastic idea. It will offer us locations that we're in great need of, and I'm very excited to hear more about this.
Anyone else? Certainly, this is a great idea, and I just kind of wonder why we haven't thought of this before, why this hasn't happened before. So I guess we, you know, we thank the current staff and council for coming up with this kind of initiative. So seeing no other questions? All those in favor of the resolution? And that is carried. Thank you. Item 5.3, a delegation from Ms. Vicky Jones, Principal, East Elgin Secondary School. Ms. Jones.
Oh, no. Oh, that's now it's on. I can tell. We're so honored to be here to share our ideas with you tonight. I am Vicky Jones, proud principal of East Elgin Secondary School. I have with me here Jason Wilkins, who is one of the VPs at our school, to share some information with you. And I've also brought Derek Focart, who is a science teacher in our building, but who will be hopefully using the ICE in a wonderful new initiative, new program that we're running at East Elgin, that hockey would be the focus of a phys ed class that we'll be running next year. We propose a mutually beneficial partnership between East Elgin and the town of Elmer to enhance the use of recreational facilities in town buildings. This agreement aims to optimize resources, foster community engagement, and provide enriched experiences both for our students and the other residents of Elmer. Scroll down. Okay, thank you. Okay. Our presentation today will talk about the importance, what we believe to be the importance of the reciprocal agreement, the pillars of our East Elgin hockey program, sort of a little bit about the program that Derek will be sharing with you, some spaces at East Elgin that are readily available, moving on to other ideas as well that we are having, presented to you by Jason Wilkins. I love that. Thank you so much. Scroll for me. Oh, it's just, must be the weather. It's cold, too. I will say, because I know what's coming up next, is for us, the benefits for us is access to diverse facilities within the town of Elmer. We were really fortunate, the first PD day this year, our teachers came to different locations throughout the town of Elmer to see possibilities in Arts Council, the library, through, and it was really fantastic for them to see that in order for them to also be on board with the reciprocal agreement that we're hoping to work through. Students then would have access to Elmer's recreational parks and buildings, offering a variety of environments for physical education, sports teams, music, and drama, as well as extracurricular activities. On this fantastic slideshow that we have for you, Trevor Hippley, who is the music teacher at East Elgin, remembers the day when someone in this room was the principal of East Elgin, and they used above the library for a theatrical presentation of sort of a murder mystery night. Those are, and as the mayor already said, why has this not been done a long time ago or thought of a long time ago? I believe, as the principal of East Elgin, that we are the heart of Elmer. There's lots going on in our building, and we feel really connected to this community. So we want to really be able to make it official. We also believe, oh, thank you, there it is. We also believe through the town of Elmer to optimize facility use, there are things that are going on for the youth of Elmer every night at East Elgin currently, and there's other opportunities that we'll talk about later that could help support Elmer specifically, youth engagement, and really, as I said before, strong partnerships between the school and the community. I'm going to pass it over now to Derek Focart, who will talk you through just a little bit of the hockey program that we're hoping to offer with this, helped by this agreement.
Still work to scroll? There we go. Awesome. So a couple of the pillars of our hockey program here is we want to empower our students with an emphasis on building students' confidence, resilience, teamwork, and communication skills, in addition to focusing on their personal growth, so committed to academic and athletic success, helping each student reach their full potential while encouraging them to lead and live a healthy, active lifestyle, being a phys ed teacher, being an athletic person, and having used those community spaces and grown up in these community spaces around Elmer. I know the importance of living a healthy, active lifestyle, and I just want to reciprocate that out to my students and as well to this community. And then also fostering a love for hockey. Elmer has a rich hockey community, whether you look at the Elmer Blues, if you remember that from a long time ago, the Elmer Spitfires, Elmer Minor Hockey, and now East Elgin Minor Hockey as well. There's a lot of members in the Elmer area and surrounding communities that are passionate about hockey, and we just want to keep rolling with that. So a bit more about the program here. The program description is that it would be open to, a coed program, open to grade nine and 10 students, starting in hopefully the 2025, 2026 school year. With the program being said, it's a regular phys ed program, but instead of participating in regular phys ed activities, students actually get to play hockey. So this would actually be open to people who have never experienced the game of hockey before, should they choose to sign up. In addition to that, students will receive a phys ed credit in grade nine and in grade 10, depending on whether or not they're in grade nine, when they take it, or when they're in grade 10. The ideal time slot for us and for this program would be from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m., and it's, again, open to male and female students. That's just because with the time scheduling of our school, that would give our students enough time to get from the arena and back to class because they would have to walk.
And I've also brought Derek Focart, who is a science teacher in our building, but who will be hopefully using the ICE in a wonderful new initiative, new program that we're running at East Elgin, that hockey would be the focus of a phys ed class that we'll be running next year. We propose a mutually beneficial partnership between East Elgin and the town of Elmer to enhance the use of recreational facilities in town buildings. This agreement aims to optimize resources, foster community engagement, and provide enriched experiences, both for our students and the other residents of Elmer. Scroll down. Okay, thank you. Okay. Our presentation today will talk about the importance, what we believe to be the importance of the reciprocal agreement, the pillars of our East Elgin hockey program, sort of a little bit about the program that Derek will be sharing with you, some spaces at East Elgin that are readily available, moving on to other ideas as well that we are having, presented to you by Jason Wilkins. I love that. Thank you so much. Scroll for me. Oh, it's just. Must be the weather. It's cold, too. I will say, because I know what's coming up next, is for us, the benefits for us is access to diverse facilities within the town of Elmer. We were really fortunate, the first PD day this year, our teachers came to different locations throughout the town of Elmer to see possibilities in Arts Council, the library, through, and it was really fantastic for them to see that, in order for them to also be on board with the reciprocal agreement that we're hoping to work through. Students then would have access to Elmer's recreational parks and buildings, offering a variety of environments for physical education, sports teams, music, and drama, as well as extracurricular activities. On this fantastic slideshow that we have for you, Trevor Hippley, who is the music teacher at East Elgin, remembers the day when someone in this room was the principal of East Elgin, and they used above the library for a theatrical presentation of sort of a murder mystery night. Those are, and as the mayor already said, why has this not been done a long time ago or thought of a long time ago? I believe, as the principal of East Elgin, that we are the heart of Elmer. There's lots going on in our building, and we feel really connected to this community. So, we want to really be able to make it official. We also believe, oh, thank you, there it is. We also believe through the town of Elmer to optimize facility use. There are things that are going on for the youth of Elmer every night at East Elgin currently, and there's other opportunities that we'll talk about later that could help support Elmer specifically, youth engagement, and really, as I said before, strong partnerships between the school and the community. I'm going to pass it over now to Derek Focart, who will talk you through just a little bit of the hockey program that we're hoping to offer with this, helped by this agreement.
Still work to scroll. There we go. Awesome. So, a couple of the pillars of our hockey program here is we want to empower our students with an emphasis on building students' confidence, resilience, teamwork, and communication skills, in addition to focusing on their personal growth, so committed to academic and athletic success, helping each student reach their full potential while encouraging them to lead and live a healthy, active lifestyle, being a phys ed teacher, being an athletic person, and having used those community spaces and grown up in these community spaces around Elmer. I know the importance of living a healthy, active lifestyle, and I just want to reciprocate that out to my students and as well to this community. And then also fostering a love for hockey. Elmer has a rich hockey community, whether you look at the Elmer Blues, if you remember that from a long time ago, the Elmer Spitfires, Elmer Minor Hockey, and now East Elgin Minor Hockey as well. There's a lot of members in the Elmer area and surrounding communities that are passionate about hockey, and we just want to keep rolling with that. So, a bit more about the program here. The program description is that it would be open to, a coed program, open to grade nine and 10 students, starting in hopefully the 2025, 2026 school year. With the program being said, it's a regular phys ed program, but instead of participating in regular phys ed activities, students actually get to play hockey. So, this would actually be open to people who have never experienced the game of hockey before, should they choose to sign up. In addition to that, students will receive a phys ed credit in grade nine and in grade 10, depending on whether or not they're in grade nine, when they take it, or when they're in grade 10. The ideal time slot for us and for this program would be from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m., and it's, again, open to male and female students. That's just because with the time scheduling of our school, that would give our students enough time to get from the arena and back to class, because they would have to walk. The healthy living components and assessments and evaluations of the course would be great specific for each student. And then, again, the on ICE sessions would be held at the East Elgin Community Complex, and we're asking for three days a week at the East Elgin Community Complex. So, those sessions would be for one hour, and what we're asking for, again, is those three days at the East Elgin Community Complex, just from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m., for our students to participate and earn their phys ed credits, opportunities for our arts programs to have spaces where they can bring their talents to town as well, and then opportunities for all of our students to participate in recreational and artistic pursuits. And this would be in exchange for access to a variety of spaces that East Elgin has to offer. So, this would include some of our fitness studios, our gyms, our classrooms, if you run pickleball classes there or have pickleball leagues, yoga classes, fitness classes, youth athletics. We have a really good sports academy running at East Elgin right now. There's dance spaces available, and there's even stage space as well that'd be open for community use. So, there's a whole plethora of options that we could, options and opportunities that could happen with this type of agreement.
All right. So, I'm going to talk about some areas that we are presently ready to offer. First, we have our large gym, which was just freshly renovated, brand-new floors, paint, brand-new bleachers in it, setup line for pickleball, volleyball, basically any sport you can think of. Secondly, we have our smaller gym. Again, floor is freshly done, so, again, ready for all those sports. We have our weight training facility, which has a lot of cardio equipment in it, weight equipment, so it can be used for different segments. And then last, the one room that we've sort of been talking about already is a dance studio, which is a multipurpose studio where you can do yoga, you can do dance classes, you can do first aid, CPR training through there. And then we have other areas in the school which we can always look at as we move forward. Okay? Currently, Friday night, we have a pickleball running, okay? And that goes from 6 to 8, and this can be opened up to the community right away, because I understand that you guys are doing pickleball as we speak now, so, okay? This will be, not a problem. This will be open to adolescents and adults, free of charge, so. All right. So, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Jones.
Well, it's just to say thank you, and really, honestly, letting you know that East Elgin does feel so connected to the community. It's amazing our under-the-lights nights, our, whenever we invite our families in, it is such a heart of this community, and I really, really feel like this is such a great opportunity for us to just make it official, like, as far as that goes. We are, we love this town. We love being a part of this town, and we feel really, really connected. So, thank you so much for listening, and we'll take any questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you. It's Vicki Jones and Jason Wilkins and Derek Focart. I notice, Vicki, you said that East Elgin is the heart of the community. If I may, I can add something to it. I think it's the brains and the body of the community. Maybe that's going too far, but, you know, it really is one of the jewels of the community that we kind of forget what goes on there at East Elgin Secondary School. So, thank you for your presentation. Counsel, excuse me, questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. As far as the scheduling goes on the hockey, the majority of buses arrive between 8:30 and a quarter to 9:00. Will you keep that in mind for your scheduling?
Yes.
For those folks that don't walk to school or drive?
Yes, absolutely. We've had this conversation, too, and that's why we're, the 8:30, our buses arrive anywhere from quarter after 8:00 to 8:30 in the morning, and so, 8:30?
8:30 to quarter to 9:00.
Oh, sorry, the other way around. I'm sorry. Then, with those students, there would be opportunity for parents to drop off, but also the equity piece, for me, is important, to ensure that all students can get to the arena on time. So, we will look into that. I know we said 8:30 to 9:30, was it 8:30 to 9:30 on that? This is still a work in progress. Well noted.
15 more minutes might make the difference.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Counselor Chapman?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, will the facilities at the school be available during daytime hours or only after school?
So, they would be available after-school hours, so as the school is functioning throughout the day. My understanding is that with this type of reciprocal agreement, it is sort of on off-peak hours that we may be able to coordinate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Rahi?
Kind of, or through you, Mr. Mayor, kind of to piggyback on that, but what about the summertime, when school is kind of closed? Is the facility still available then?
Yes, I would believe that's off-peak. Yeah, yeah. Absolutely, it would be available, far more available than, yeah. It's awesome.
Anyone else? I just have a curious question. I noticed you were talking about the gymnasium you have there and the weight room and stuff. Is the rifle range still underneath that?
It is.
But it's sealed off, right?
It is sealed off. You can, you could get to it under sort of, yeah, there is an access point to it, but it's sealed off.
All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I come from Oxford County, and at Huron Park, Oxford County, they also have all of those schools that were built at that time period. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a resolution.
Yes, the delegation from Vicki Jones, principal of East Elgin Secondary School, regarding a joint use of facilities agreement be received for information.
All those in favor? Thank you very much for that presentation. Item 6, consent agenda. Resolution?
That the January 22nd, 2025 consent agenda be received for information, and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held of council on January 8th, 2025.
Mover in seconder? Counselor Chapman, Counselor Rahi. Any questions, comments on any of those minutes? Counselor DeRosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is regarding the minutes from the Old Town Hall Advisory Committee on November 12th. There is a resolution there, number 13-24, and I was wondering if council would be receiving an update regarding that resolution in the forthcoming meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the resolution?
Number 13-24, that one right there. Regarding the legacy grant.
Through the mayor to Counselor DeRosier. So, we did include that resolution on a correspondence to council at the council meeting subsequent to this committee meeting. So, I believe it was the second meeting in November, or the first meeting in December. There was a letter that included it. Council did not adopt that resolution.
Okay. Any, anything further? So, just to clarify, because I think I see some frowns, it did come up on the December 6th or whatever date that was, and council did not pick it up as an item, so therefore was dealt with at that time. That's basically what you're saying, right?
That's correct.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it's Carrie. Thank you. Number 7, action item, Director of Emergency Services, Fire Chief, by resolution.
That report Fire 01-25, entitled Fire Department Final Report 2024, be received for information.
Mover in seconder? Counselor Chapman and Counselor Barber. And Fire Chief?
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, members of council. First of all, I must apologize for the length of my report, but we had a lot of information to share with you, so thank you for bearing with us. I'll just touch on some of the highlights I'd like to bring forward that I'm sure you all noticed. It was a typical year for Elmer Fire. We answered 130 calls. Our property saved versus our property losses was in the positive side for '24. Our programs in place, such as our fire training coordinator, as our first full-time responding daytime firefighter, was a huge success and decreased our response time, much like we anticipated. Our PAL program that council supported, where we help citizens with limited mobility, is becoming more and more popular and utilized by many more seniors in the municipality every year. In '24, our grant application was successful. We will receive approximately $8,200 towards our bunker gear dryer as part of our cancer reduction program. The risk assessment that you see attached to your package was due in '24. It identifies our high-risk areas, which are, of course, our vulnerable citizens and our residential home fires. So, when we look at risk, we look at industry, industrial facilities, and the people and residents that are inside, and, of course, that's our biggest risk, that we look at our citizens. And, of course, it points to our vulnerabilities and our residential home fires, which we'll mitigate through our education programs, our fire safety programs, such as our PAL program that we already institute, school and public events, and, of course, our CEO knock and talks that are popular every year, where we hand out CEO alarms with Epcor. A few indicators that I wish to point out and caution council that we have coming up for Elmer Fire, as our municipality grows, we will be striving to reach that 30,000, or I'm sorry, 30 firefighter roster, as recommended in the Dillon Report Service Report of 2020. Also, our Support One pickup truck is scheduled for replacement next year. That is a responding fire apparatus, and it is starting to fail. Our Rescue Six emergency response vehicle is ready for replacement in '27, which means it would need to be ordered in '26. All this, of course, pending council's approval. At this time, I could ask, answer any questions that council may have for me. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, council. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Chief, I know how hard it is to improve your response time by 45 seconds. Good work on the part of everybody, and kudos for your enhanced youth and senior outreach.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it's Carrie. Thank you. 7.3, Manager of Planning and Development, we have a resolution.
That the council of the town of Elmer receive report Plan 01-25 regarding planning evaluation report, application for consent to sever, number E1025, and that the application for consent to sever, number E1025, relating to the property legally described as part of Lot 11, south of Warren Street, registered plan 74, being part one of reference plan 11R1118686, and known municipally as 52 Warren Street, be supported in principle with the recommended conditions for the reason, for reasons set out in this report, and that this report be forwarded to Land Division Committee for its review and consideration.
Thank you. Mover in seconder? Counselor Chapman and Counselor Ozlech. And we have Heather.
Thank you, Your Worship. The severance application report that is before you tonight is essentially to subdivide the land of a semi-detached building that's currently under construction, so that each semi-detached unit can have individual ownership of its unit and the land. In terms of planning policy review, the proposal, the proposed application is consistent with the provincial policy statement that's been newly approved in 2024. Terms of the county's plan, it also conforms to the current, as well as the adopted plans as well. It also meets all of the town of Elmer official plan policies. It's important to note that entrance servicing and stormwater management have already been addressed on this property at the building permit stage, as this dwelling is currently under construction. It's important to note that the reason why the owner has applied for this severance at this time is because they've already had the, they've had the foundation poured, they know where the common wall is between the two units, and that is an integral part of understanding where the separation of the lot lines are to create the lots on this parcel. So, that is why this semi-detached unit is currently under construction, and that is why the owner has proceeded to apply for severance at this time. No comments of concern from town staff. So, in conclusion, planning staffer of the opinion that this, the proposed severance application should be supported in principle to Land Division Committee, subject to the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Council? Counselor Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Heather. Is this, is this something that's like normal? Is this kind of a normal thing that happens when you're building a detached home that you severed up?
Well, it is normal if you want to have each unit have individual ownership. If not, then the semi-detached units would be located on one lot.
So, sorry, is this normal in Elmer? Is this common? Like, is there lots of them around?
Yes, this is common. Yes, sorry. My apologies. This happens quite frequently throughout the town.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Yes, Carrie. Thank you. Item 7.5, Legislative Services Grid, Naturalized Lawn Provisions, we have a resolution. Did I miss one? I just missed a very small one, right? Manager of Planning and Development, that's great, 7.3, resolution.
That report Plan 02-25 regarding planning evaluation report, application for part lot exemption be received, and that application for part lot control exemption for lands legally described as lots 1 to 9, lots 39 to 46, lots 49, 50, 75, and 76, on registered plan 11M268 be approved, and that bylaws 10-25, 11-25, 12-25 be adopted, as included in the bylaw portion of this agenda, and that the adopted bylaws be forwarded to the county of Elgin for consideration of approval.
Thank you. Mover in seconder? Counselor Chapman and Deputy Mayor Barber. Heather?
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. This report, an application you have before you tonight, is a new one. This is the first, first time that the town of ever, has, town of Elmer has ever had a request for exemption to part lot control. And the reasons why, this is just another tool in the toolbox as a planner that we can utilize. And the reason why this tool can be utilized is because Performance Communities Realty, Inc., which is also known as the Willow Run Subdivision, it is a registered plan of subdivision. It is a recently registered plan of subdivision that has also had fairly recent public meeting, public consultation, and reviews. As part of the plan of subdivision process, the developers had always disclosed to town staff and had always planned for it in terms of infrastructure and layout to subdivide what you see as blocks into individual lots for all of these units. So, what this part lot control exemption does, it's a tool under the Planning Act, and it allows for this further subdivision of the land to facilitate the development of the semi-detached and street townhouse units currently being constructed in the subdivision, as well as being proposed. And what this essentially allows is allows for individual ownership of the townhouse units, as well as the semi-detached units. So, as you saw in the previous application, the owners applied for consent to subdivide the semi-detached units into individual lots. The reasons why that owner had to apply for consent is because that lot that they were severing off of had been created by consent and not by a plan of subdivision. So, they were not able to utilize this tool, whereas for this development, because this development was approved as a plan of subdivision, part lot control exemption in the Planning Act could be applied here. So, as you see in my report, I don't want to go into all the detail. It's pretty lengthy, it's quite comprehensive, but I've listed all the lots that they are requesting for, and as I said, it's for various semi-detached dwellings, as well as various street townhouse dwellings as well. It's important for you to note that the Planning Act permits municipalities to pass bylaws to exempt lots or blocks, in this case, which are blocks, within a registered plan of subdivision from part lot control. So, further severance of individual lots or blocks can happen. Exemptions from part lot control are generally applied to semi-detached and townhouse developments, where a lot line has created a common wall. And we can't, we can't apply this part lot control until we know exactly where the dividing wall is, so as in the foundation walls. wall is, so as in the foundation walls dividing the units up. So in the case for this development, the developer, this development's under construction. So in the case of these lots that are, that are, that they have applied for, some of the semi-detached and townhouse dwellings, the foundations have already been poured, and the rest of the ones that haven't, the, the Ontario Land Surveyor has gone out and actually physically pinned the location of where the concrete foundations are to be poured, so they can be poured precisely, so they know exactly where the lot lines can be established. It's important to note, an exemption to part lot control is necessary since a part of a lot or block cannot be sold to another owner without a planning approval. And this is a planning approval, it's just another type of planning approval. Council has the authority to pass the bylaws, however, they don't come into force and effect until the County of Elgin issues a decision, which has been delegated to their Director of Planning and Development. And I've been informed this will happen quite quickly, should these bylaws be passed. It's not required to go to County Council. In terms of planning analysis, the provincial policy statement basically just supports settlement areas, and that's where growth is to occur. In the current county official plan, we don't have policies. However, in the adopted county plan, there is policy pertaining to part lot control exemption, and this proposal meets the proposed adopted county official plan policies. It's important to note, as I've mentioned, the proposed request for exemption of part lot control is for semi-detached and street townhouse units. The semi-detached and street townhouse units were planned for in the servicing and presented to the public and to agencies during the circulation. So this has all been, as I mentioned earlier, upfront, have been a part of this process right from the beginning. Although there is no legislative requirement for public or agency consultation for part lot control exemptions, it's important for you to be aware that approved site works for this development are included in the subdivision agreement, which includes approval from the Director of Infrastructure. Further to that, the subject lands were rezoned to allow the development of semi-detached and house, townhouse dwelling units, which is consistent with the planning frameworks and subject to public and agency circulation. So again, as I said, this has been planned right from the beginning for this type of development to occur. It's important also, lastly, for you to be aware that to avoid any subsequent transfers under the Planning Act consent, the part lot control exemption will expire in three years. What that means is, is if the owner does not convey those part lots within three years' time, that part lot control exemption expires, and they will have to reapply, and they are well aware of that. So in conclusion, the application meets the requirements for part lot control exemption, and it's consistent with the planning framework, and it's recommended that the requested bylaws be adopted and subsequently forwarded on to the County of Elgin for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather, for that explanation. Counsel, questions? Counselor De Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What do, like, ultimately, who do these part, these partland divisions benefit? Like, is it the developer? Is it the, the future owner? Is it the town? Like, who ultimately benefits from this?
Actually, everyone benefits from this. And the reasons why is because if you, if you don't create the lots through, or create these units and subdivide the land through part lot control, then they have to go through consent. Consent is costly, so that cost then, the developer pays, which they probably transfer then to the future homeowner. It also is another report and staff time to come forward to this council for an approval. It also has to then go forward to Land Division Committee for another approval. So it kind of delays, it also incurs additional costs. So this is actually a benefit for all parties.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. To Heather, with the three years expiration, it certainly puts, puts a lot of onus on the developer to, to get these dwellings in place and sold within a relatively short period of time.
That is correct. Now, they can apply for, it's my, my apologies, they can apply for extensions, but they do have to come back before this, before council and get approval from the county as well.
Counselor Barber.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Heather. I was just going to say thank you for saving everybody time and money. That's why we have experts like you to do this, so thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, all those in favor? Yes, carried, thank you. Now we go to seven point five, right?
Seven point four.
Seven point four, all right. I keep wanting you to go to seven point five for some reason, so we're at seven point four. Manager of Operations, the Elmer Water Distribution System Report, we have a resolution.
That report Operation Zero Two dash twenty-five entitled Elmer Water Distribution System Annual Summary Reports be received as information, and that council receives the annual summary report for the Elmer Distribution System for the year of 2024 as required by Ontario Regulation One Seven Zero dash zero-three, Schedule Twenty-two, and that Elmer receives the Elmer Distribution System Annual Report for the year of twenty-four as required by the Ontario Regulation One Seven Zero, Zero Three, Section Eleven.
Mover and Seconder? Counselor Chapman, Counselor De Rosier. And who's doing the report?
Thank you, your worship. So as Owen had mentioned, the Town of Elmer is required to complete an annual and summary report for our water distribution system under Section Eleven, Schedule Twenty-two of the Oreg One Seventy, under the Safe Drinking Water Act. These reports must be made available to the public free of charge if requested. As part of this annual process, all members of council are issued a copy of each report to review, endorse, and adopt by resolution prior to being published. One of the ways that we share through, to the public is posting them online once they're approved through council. Quick summary of the annual report, which focuses on sampling. We did two-hundred-and-sixty-one bacteriological samples, no adverse, no adverse lead. Our running averages of HAA and THM were well within our limits. So that's the extent of our sampling requirements. And then for the summary report, it, it focuses on usage. So with the summary report, must include the following information to assist the owner in assessing the capability of the system to meet existing and future uses. A summary of the quantities and flow rates of the water supplied during this period, so all of 2024, covered by the report, including monthly average and maximum daily flows. A comparison of the summary results to the rated capacity and flow rates approved in the system's approval, drinking water works permit or municipal drinking water license, or if the system is receiving all its water from another system under the agreement to the flow rate specified in that agreement. So the summary there on our usage is that we were perfectly flat, we were exactly forty-two percent, the same as last year, of the rated capacity or supply of our system. Beyond that, it's very much the same. We saw increased usage in the summer, reduced usage in the winter. The high day was December twenty-first, the main break that resulted in the boil water, just shy of nine thousand cubes, when an average day is about forty-five hundred. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that report, Connor. Counsel? Questions? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you too, Connor. The water break December twenty-first that you touched on, has it been completely finished, or is it still a temporary repair?
No, so when we were able to get down to the site and assess the, what was going on with the pipe specifically, we're able to repair it with the proper repair clamps at that time, so it's considered repaired.
Hey, thank you for that. It was a difficult day weather-wise, good job from our people.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Rahi.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just don't want to keep talking about the, the break, but is it, is it from like degrading the infrastructure? Like, is it going to be something that just kind of keeps on flaring up? Or is, was it just because it was in the parking lot over time? You know what I mean?
Yeah, through your worship, to Counselor Rahi. I can't say exactly what caused that specific break, but there's a lot of factors, each one is completely unique. That particular one was a ductile iron pipe, and it just experienced some corrosion and possibly some shifting that caused it to fail. There's, like I said, there's a gambit of factors that can cause these things to happen, material age, what's going on in the ground is usually the biggest thing. So they will continue to happen in any system, but we have a largely current system, lots of PVC in the ground, lots of updated infrastructure. So we, we're very lucky in that regard.
Thank you. Any other questions? I just wanted to comment briefly, not to prolong the, the break thing, but, you know, we kind of take for granted the fixing of this thing, and, you know, it happened at three o'clock in the morning on a weekend, I think it was, and it was fixed very quickly. And the only reason that we had a longer boil water advisory than usual is because we didn't get the reports back very quickly from, from the health unit, which of course the weekend delays those kinds of reports. So really good, good work on the behalf of our maintenance crew, so thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the report? And it's carried, thank you. So now I have seven point five, right? Legislative Services Coordinator Naturalized Lawn Provisions, we have a resolution.
That report Clerk Zero Four dash twenty-five respecting naturalized lawn provisions in the lawn maintenance bylaw, draft bylaw, be received for information, and that council directs staff to include the proposed provisions for naturalized lawns in the final version of the land maintenance bylaw for consideration at the future meeting of council.
All right, thank you. Mover and Seconder? Counselor Chapman? Counselor Ozlach, sir. Who's doing the report? Chelsea? All right, thank you. Chelsea, back there.
Thank you, your worship. The report before you, prepared by staff at the direction of council, introduces a series of draft provisions for council's consideration addressing naturalized lawns through the Town of Elmer's land maintenance bylaw. In recent years, there's been a shift among property owners away from traditional turf grass lawns toward naturalized landscapes and lawns. These landscapes, which incorporate native and non-native, non-invasive plant species, are valued for the ecological benefits, including their ability to support pollinators and wildlife, as well as reduce water usage and improve soil quality. Their presence, however, raises concerns among residents, namely in regard to differing aesthetics and concerns over property maintenance and the potential impact on neighboring properties. The draft bylaw provisions outlined in this report seek to strike a balance between these competing interests. Key provisions of this bylaw report include providing clear definitions for terms such as naturalized lawn, turf grass, and buffer strip. The inclusion of buffer strips being that naturalized areas must be bordered by a sixty-centimeter-wide strip of turf grass or ground cover to prevent plant material from spreading to neighboring and adjacent properties. Imposing maintenance standards, signifying that all naturalized areas must be maintained to no longer include noxious weeds, turf grass, pests, or invasive species, and so that they do not pose a fire hazard or safety hazard. And requiring additional safety measure, measures, being that naturalized areas must not obstruct access to public utilities, for example, fire hydrants, pedestrian right-of-ways, or block visibility to intersections. This proposal reflects a mixed approach seen in other Ontario municipalities, balancing the environmental benefits of naturalized lawns with the need for clear maintenance standards and neighborhood harmony. Staff are prepared to proceed based on council's direction.
All right, thank you. Counsel? Counselor Ozlach.
Your worship, I'd like to, I would like to comment on naturalized lawns.
Do you want to turn your mic on? It's on. Sorry.
They require less water, less fertilizer, they're biodiversity, they're pollinator-friendly, native plants that evolved in their, are, are, in our climate, no mowing, two-cycle engine engines are a great pluder, less pesticide use, beauty-friendly, non-invasive. And furthermore, converting just one-quarter of each lawn in this country would equal fourteen thousand four hundred hectares of habitat for pollinators. Every year in this country, people use as millions of liters of water to irrigate their lawns, millions of liters of gas for mowing, and millions of kilos of pesticides. Cities and towns like Hamilton and Guelph and Tillsenburg adopted the bylaws for natural lawns.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor De Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I just want to commend Counselor Ozlach for this notice of motion and initiative that he brought forward. I think we can all agree that his heart is in a very pure place when he brings this forward for not only the environment, but for everything else that has to go with it as well. So thank you, Counselor Ozlach, for that. While I can support, there's, there's gardens in town currently that I would classify as a naturalized lawn. There's one specifically on John Street that I walk by, has lots of native plants. It looks just like what Counselor Ozlach is describing. But in saying that, I've also come across lawns where the owners just don't cut the grass, and the grass gets, you know, sometimes three feet tall before it's escalated to bylaw or something happens, right? So my question that I have for staff would be in a situation similar to that, where there was a property that perhaps the owner would think that it was a naturalized lawn, but they were just not cutting the grass at all. How would staff and bylaw proceed based off these new recommendations? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Someone on staff want to answer that?
Through the mayor to Counselor De Rosier. So the, we would be taking the same complaint-based approach, and base, we would be using the provisions in the bylaw, the new definitions, to determine whether it is a naturalized lawn space or a, essentially a turf grass open area space. We think the definitions are quite strong, they are used in other municipalities, so that would be the approach taken, and it would follow the same approach currently taken, which is a complaint is received, and then we go through the, the bylaw enforcement process with the owner.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. I think the, the bylaw is well-written primarily around the, the conditions for which these natural lawns can occur with a maximum height of twenty centimeters or eight inches. On the other side of it, all of the property owners that I spoke to leading up to this, were concerned that in any situation, there are unfortunately going to be people that will abuse regulations and, and expectations. I wonder with the consent of council if we could reach out to some of those municipalities that endorse similar type bylaw, and see if there is any tweaking that could be done to ours in order to, to address the situations when, when people don't comply with the structure of the bylaw.
So that's a question you're asking staff right now. Have we in fact contacted any of those communities that have this type of bylaw?
So I, specifically, we've reached out to other communities to look at their existing provisions within their bylaws, and I've only spoken with staff from the Town of Tillsenberg, who didn't indicate any issues with the, their existing bylaw, but if, it's the will of council, certainly a deferral of the matter, and we could, to reach out to other municipalities.
Counselor De Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a suggestion and possibility, what about the creation of a, like a property standards committee or something, so that should these situations arise, they can be basically delegated to the committee to then oversee and, and make decisions on? Is that a possibility at all?
Through the, the mayor to Counselor De Rosier. So this bylaw was the result of the review which we conducted in, and presented to council in September or October. A part of that review was the re-establishment of the- A part of that review was the re-establishment of the property, the bylaw appeals committee under the property standards bylaw. The committee would not apply to the, the clean yard. In this case, we're changing the name to the lawn maintenance bylaw, primarily due to kind of the nature of enforcement of lawn maintenance issues. They are kind of standard issues, and if council has a concern with the, the timeline of enforcement on these issues, certainly having an appeal mechanism would extend that timeline by either one to two months, depending on organizing a committee and actually bringing the individual in to speak to the committee, which is why we did not include it in the lawn maintenance bylaw.
Anyone else? Counselor Barber?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I would support what Deputy Mayor Barber was suggesting. Not against naturalized lawns, but I do have some reservations and some concerns, because what one person considers a naturalized lawn might be a nuisance to a neighbor, especially if it involves grass that's three feet high that someone doesn't want to cut, and encourages rodents and like mice or rats, gives them a place to hide. Or another concern that was addressed in here was fire hydrants. We don't want to show up and can't find the fire hydrant because there's three feet of grass growing around it. So while I'm not against naturalized lawns, I just would support maybe doing, getting a little bit more information, making sure that we can have a little bit of control over, over that as well. But I do think the bylaw that we have here is well-written, but I'm supporting what Deputy Mayor Barber was stating.
Counsel Rahi?
Just kind of a comment, I guess, through you, Mr. Mayor. I love the idea of naturalized lawns. If there's, you know, flowers and stuff that are growing, but just grass, I, I feel like it's going to be something, another tool in people's toolbox to take advantage of not maintaining their property. Not trying to beat up on it or be the, the negative, on the negative side. It's just, I don't want it to turn into something with good initiatives, and then it turn into grass everywhere that's just not being maintained because there is some good in it. But I don't, I don't really know how I feel on it right now. I don't really love the idea, to be honest, but.
Anyone else? I'm hearing a couple of people asking for a deferral of the, this resolution until staff comes back with more information from other towns. That was basically what you were asking for. Is that correct, Deputy Mayor Barber?
Yes, if that could be done in a timely manner, even to be brought back by the next council meeting, if that's physically possible. Or is that too tight? Again, with the consent of council.
So we need, you're making a motion to defer this, to have council or staff report back at the earliest convenient staff meeting, I guess, or council?
I can do that.
Do we have a motion, then we have a motion to defer seconded by Counselor Barber, which is on the floor right now. Any comments on this motion? Seeing none, we will vote on, on that, defer a motion. All those in favor of deferring this, and that is, any opposed? Want to oppose? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Item seven point six, Director of Infrastructure Development and Planning Activity by Annual Update Resolution.
That report plan zero three dash twenty-five be received by the Council of the Town of Elmer regarding the development activity by annual update 2024 for information purposes.
Mover and sec. Counselor Chapman, Counselors Rozier and Terry, I guess.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to members of council. To give a brief review on the development update before you, it was a very busy year in 2024. The previous update in the summer provided an optimistic projection for the increase of building permits. This certainly came to fruition as building permits drastically increased in the fall through to 2025. There were a total of 64 building permits issued in the second half of 2024. In total, 115, 115 new dwelling units were created over the year, which is significantly higher than previous years. This should start to give residents more options and start to combat the current housing shortage. A quick update on subdivisions. Cottonwood is continuing residential construction at a steady pace. Centennial Estates has completed site works and has several residential properties currently underway. Willow Run is progressing at a very rapid pace. There has been 20, 21 building permits issued in the last five months alone. The extension of the trail system has also been completed. That links Rotary Park. As for site plans, the first site plan in Ain Park has commenced for a 24,000-square-foot manufacturing facility, and another lot has been sold in the park. The condominium site at 335 John Street South is nearly complete, and the site was beginning to be landscaped and cleaned up before the weather kind of turned for the worse, but the site is being cleaned up. The 13 townhouses, 13 units, my apologies, the 13-unit townhouse site at 249 John Street South is also nearly complete. Construction has started for phase two of the 25 Progress Drive site, which is beside the Dairy Queen, and this is for some new restaurants at that location. And I won't dig into every single site, but there are other site plans for industrial and residential that are in the final stages and will be started construction in 2025. As for planning and development, planning and development staff have been very busy with zoning amendments, minor variances, and severances. Staff have also conducted numerous pre-consultations for planning and site plan applications. This all equates to another optimistic outlook for 2025. Building permits remain high and should continue to be very steady in 2025. On that, there's quite a bit of information in the report, and I will open it up to any specific questions that.
Thank you very much, Terry. I think you should come back and do the mayor's report in February. Counsel? Counselors Rozier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give kudos to staff for all the work they're doing with this development. I think there's been a lot of sites within that have been, you know, unsightly, or that they've been kind of just sitting there and standing by. So the fact that we're seeing all this progress, we're seeing this development, we're seeing valuable housing come to our community, I think it's such a great thing. I don't think there's a, a section of town right now that's not being touched by this. So I think it's really, really great, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, counsel? Again, thank you very much for that report, Terry. All those in favor of the resolution is carried. Thank you. Item seven point seven, Chief Administrative Officer Utilization of Delegated Authority Resolution.
That report CAO zero four dash twenty-five respecting annual report utilization of delegated authority legal matters be received for information.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Barber, Counselor Rahi. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, this is an annual report on the use of my council delegated authority to resolve minor claims or litigation against the municipality. The benefit of this approach is that it avoids small matters impacting our insurance premium. So the way I explain it to the public is it's almost like you get in a very minor fender bender. You just exchange information. You get a quote on what it costs to fix it, and you don't necessarily go through your insurance. With my delegation, though, and really with any delegation, it's really important to have routine reporting for transparency and accountability, and this fulfills that requirement. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of counsel.
Questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor, and carried. Thank you. Item seven point eight, CAO Telecommunications Installation Policy Resolution.
That report CAO zero five dash twenty-five respecting telecommunications installation policy be received for information, and that council approve the proposed telecommunications installation policy as presented.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Ozlaj, Counselors Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is to establish a telecommunications policy for the town. We're seeing quite a lot of interest in bringing high-speed fiber into the community. I know for a lot of residents, this is long overdue. The proposed policy seeks to ensure that we avoid conflict and keep areas without overhead cabling clear from that being introduced. So we're trying to preserve the beauty of our community. This policy will supplement the road occupancy permit requirements, and is a clear indication that, well, we want to encourage a competitive marketplace for high-speed fiber. We don't want to police arguments between installers, nor do we want their work to be disruptive to residents. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of counsel.
Counsel? Counselor Chapman?
Thank you, your worship. I just have one concern. Read in the port about the lines that run through the back of homes, and that, that they could tap into that so they wouldn't be underground. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in, just in cases where there's already hydro lines running, they'd work through the utility. Most of the town, it's earth. They'd work through the utility, and they could also utilize that section to do the same thing. But it wouldn't be installed where there is not a pre-existing wire already running.
Is there any way that that could be changed? It's just, we have enough wires running through our backyards for those of us who have that, and I just wondered if there's any plans for that to change, to put them underground as well. So with adding another line to that, is there any way that it could run in any other way?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, if council wanted that to be a requirement in the policy, we could amend the policy to say that the, the town has a strong preference for underground installations. You know, we wouldn't want to, there's some alleyways in the back that there's a lot of lines running already, where it may be difficult to put them underground because of it. I don't know, Rob, if you have anything further to add?
Yeah, I think we also discussed that this prevents them coming in where there is a pole line and seeking another pole line. You've seen it on roads, there's dual pole lines. They typically don't like to be hung off of each other's infrastructure. So this policies that draft is kind of forcing everybody to work together. That they, just because there's a pole line there, you wouldn't, they, they wouldn't be permitted to do a dual pole line down a road, if that makes sense.
Thank you, your worship. So there are some homes, so on York Street and Treelawn, for example, that the line runs through the backyards. And so it, there is no alleyway or anything, that, that the poles run through the back of the yards. And so are you saying that this would just attach to those existing poles?
Through you, your worship. The town only has authority to grant installations on, on the road allowance. So if that existing utility has an easement back there for their pole line, that is their easement. They pretty much can do with it what they want. Ours is, our policy would govern how it goes in on the town-owned lands. Yeah.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that is carried. Thank you. Seven point nine, the wide-area network insurance resolution.
That report CAO zero six dash twenty-five respecting the wide-area network RFP issuance be received for information, and that council directs staff to proceed with RFP for wide-area network to connect SCADA pump stations and the lagoon system.
Mover and seconder, Counselors Rozier and Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this report is to proceed with a wide-area network for the town's pump stations, lagoons, and the new water tower. As council will recall, we did try an innovative economic development approach first by issuing a request for interest, expression of interest, respecting high-speed connectivity. This approach was done to see if this project could be used as a catalyst to encourage residential high-speed fiber connectivity. While the outcomes of the request for expression of interest were valuable, ultimately, it led staff to the realization that there was likely not an added value for the potential expenditure by the town. So we're proposing the issuance of an RFP that will allow proponents to submit any proposal they want to achieve the connectivity we're looking for for these systems. This work, along with the SCADA upgrades and the lagoon optimization, is going to assist the town in monitoring the system, improving efficiency, and it will also alert us immediately to any issues requiring our attention. And we've also put a high scoring on the, the cost for, for this. So we're, we're hopeful that we will get a, a very affordable system through this RFP process. And with that, I'll, I'll try to answer any questions of counsel.
Counsel? Counselors Rozier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question actually that involves this report as well as the last one I just thought of. Is, are staff aware of any provincial or federal grant funding that would be applicable?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a very good question. Certainly, one of the challenges, I think, that the Town of Elmer's had for the last two years is that there has been funding for, for rural connectivity, but Elmer has been singled out to not qualify because our internet service was too good. It was too high-speed. And so it was something that I know we, I did reach out to the Ministry of Infrastructure a couple of years ago and raises a concern, because there is a strong business case for the provision of high-speed fiber here. We've got a very dense geographic area with lots of population, and it just makes business sense for a company to come in here and provide high-speed fiber. But because there's been so much rural connectivity in very small hamlets, all the, all the government funding has created a policy incentive where we haven't seen that investment that's frankly overdue in Elmer. So it is, it is an interesting situation that we were put in, but there really isn't any funding available to us, aside from that, that Housing Enabling Water System Fund that we certainly are, are thankful to the province for providing.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, too, Andy. Would it be anticipated that this would probably be a wireless system?
I believe that that would be a likely outcome with us being so small. It would likely be a radio connectivity or Wi-Fi or something of that nature.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, all those in favor of the resolution is carried. Thank you. Great. Are there any new business or matters of urgency in reading of bylaws resolutions?
That council gives three readings to and approves. Bylaw zero nine dash twenty-five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council held on the January eighth, 2025, held on January eighth, 2025. Bylaw ten dash twenty-five being a bylaw to exempt from part lot control lands legally described as lots one, two, three, four, five, and six, forty-one, forty-two, twenty-five, and twenty-six, and twenty-nine on Plan 11M268 designated as parts one to eighty-seven on Plan 11R11291 in the Town of Elmer in the County of Elgin. Bylaw eleven dash twenty-five being a bylaw to exempt from part lot control lands legally described as lots three, thirty-nine, forty, forty-three, forty-four, and fifty on Plan 11M268 designated as parts of, parts one to thirty-seven on Plan 11R11293 in the Town of Elmer in the County of Elgin. And bylaw twelve dash twenty-five being a bylaw to exempt from part lot control lands legally described as lots seven, eight, nine, seventy-five, and seventy-six on Plan 11M268 designated as parts one to fifty-four on Plan 11R11294 in the Town of Elmer in the County of Elgin.
Okay, thank you. Mover and seconder, Counselor Chapman, Counselors Rozier. Questions, comments from counsel? Counselors Rozier?
Yeah, can Owen read that out again, please?
That was my line, Counselor. I don't know why they have to have that much in the bylaw, but nevertheless, I guess legally it's required. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor is carried. Thank you. Inquiries by members. Statements and committee reports by members. Counselors Rozier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to provide an
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to provide an update on my recent attendance at the Rural Ontario Municipalities Association Conference, which proved to be a highly productive and insightful experience. The conference offered a series of workshops tailored to educate municipal leaders on key issues facing rural communities. A number of municipal leaders and staff from Elgin County were in attendance, which provided an excellent opportunity to build and strengthen relationships with our neighboring municipalities. I would like to thank and extend my heartfelt gratitude to the members of Elgin County who generously took me under their wings and shared their experiences and insights. A key highlight from my time at Roma was the opportunity to participate in delegations with senior provincial officials. I had the privilege of meeting with the Honorable Sylvia Jones, Deputy Premier of Ontario and Minister of Health, to discuss healthcare challenges specifically affecting Elmer. Additionally, I was able to engage with the Honorable Jill Dunlop, Minister of Education, to advocate for much-needed reforms to the civics curriculum aimed at better preparing our students and strengthening our democracy. These important delegations were supported by Elgin's Member of Parliament, the Honorable Rob Flack, and his team, and I would like to express my gratitude for their support and participation. Moreover, I was able to secure valuable time with several key provincial ministers, including Minister Paul Calandra for Housing and Municipal Affairs, Minister Lisa Thompson for Rural Affairs, and Ministers Stan Cho for Tourism and Culture. These discussions were beneficial not only in furthering my understanding of provincial priorities, but also in advocating for the needs of Elmer and our community. This conference was a great opportunity to learn and raise the profile of Elmer in discussions at the provincial level. I am incredibly appreciative of council's support in increasing our training budget, which allowed the opportunity to attend this conference and gain valuable insights that will benefit our municipality. As we look ahead to future opportunities, I'm excited to continue building relationships with the province and advocate for the needs of Elmer. Thank you once again to my council for support, and I look forward to our continued efforts in advocating and advancing the interests of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report, Counselors Rozier. If I may, I'd like to make a comment on that. Certainly, certainly it's important that any municipality presents itself to ministers, and conferences, of course, are a great venue to do this. I would like to emphasize that council should thoroughly discuss the potential for delegations when the next conference comes up, when the next conference opportunity comes up. Imagine the impact that a large delegation from Elmer would have at the next conference. Let's work, let's work together to do this so that when we get a, an opportunity to go to a conference, that we can discuss thoroughly what kinds of items we'd like to present to ministers and have as many of us go as possible. I recognize that we were given the opportunities to suggest topics for delegation sometime in the past, especially for Roma, but we decided not to. I think perhaps we should, perhaps I should have pushed more in terms of getting people to go. So, I commend Counselors Rozier for her initiative on this, and I'm sure she helped put Elmer on the map. So, thank you. Any other counselors? Seeing none, we don't, I'm not, I don't have a report. Notice of motion, there is none. Meeting closed to the public, resolution.
That council moves into a meeting closed to the public at 8:30 PM to discuss the following matters. Chief Administrative Officer reports, CAO 07-25, confidential claims update, and that consideration of this item is closed to the public pursuant to Section 239.2E of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, as the subject matter pertains to litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipality, as well as personal matters about an identifiable individual.
Mover in, Sec. 1. Counselor Chapman and Deputy Mayor Barber. All those in favor? That's carried.
Ms. Carey. Brief brief. Everyone, welcome back, everyone. We have resolution from closed session.
That council rise from a meeting closed to the public at 8:51 PM and reports the following. That council received for information and provided direction to the CAO regarding Chief Administrative Officer Report, CAO 07-24, Respecting Confidential Claims Update.
Mover and secander. Counselors Dussrouzi, Counselor Barber. All those in favor. Ms. Carey. Motion to adjourn.
That council do now adjourn at 8:51 PM.
Mover and secander. Counselors Dussrouzi, Counselor Oslach. All those in favor. Ms. Carey. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and counselors.